Off to a happy new year. At this time, we'll have a prayer by Mr. Glavine followed by the pledge led by Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Glavine.
Heavenly Father, as we gather here today in the city of Biloxi, we pause to reflect on the journey that has brought us to this moment. We thank you for the blessings of community, the richness of our heritage, and the promise of a bright future ahead. Inspire us, Lord, with a vision that transcends our present challenges. Grant us the wisdom to see the opportunities where others see obstacles, and the courage to act boldly in pursuit of progress. May our hearts be filled with hope as we strive to uplift every citizen of Biloxi. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice prayer, brother Wayne. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Some of.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second? Second by Mr. McGilvery. Let the record reflect that Mr. Lawrence is not here, not present this evening. All right. Any discussion on suspending the rules? There being none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor of suspending the rules? It's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. If the clerk would read the changes to the agenda.
To the consent agenda, we're adding 5X resolution authorizing change order number 35 to the construction agreement with Nikkeis Brothers Construction Company. We're adding 5Y resolution declaring the 2025 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration an official City of Biloxi event, and code enforcement removing 6G due to duplication of high-fan trend.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Some of.
Motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the amended agenda? It's approved on a 6-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you. All right. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We wish everyone a happy new year, first meeting of 2025. Lot of good things cooking, and will be coming up. But I have a special proclamation for a special person. I'm not only going to ask Butch to come up, but all his family and friends have been part of his career for this many years at the city of Biloxi. Butch, would you come up? And your family? It's hard to imagine life without Butch in the city of Biloxi. Come here, let me read this. This proclamation, on behalf of the city of Biloxi, whereas Major Harold Butch Wyndham began his distinguished career with Biloxi Police Department August 1, 1990, serving for over 34 years until his retirement, December 21, 2024. Whereas Wyndham began his law enforcement career as a patrolman, serving from 1990 until 1993, when he was promoted to an investigator. He rose up the ranks, serving as lieutenant, captain, and in 2017, a major, a role he held till his retirement. During his career, Wyndham received certification as a firearms instructor, basic water safety instructor, Board of Law Enforcement and Officer Standards and Training instructor, as well as certifications in breath analysis, basic narcotics investigation, underwater police science and technology, and intensive marine port counterterrorism. Whereas Wyndham has served as a field training officer, master scuba diver trainer, and dive team commander. Wyndham has managed the Biloxi, most importantly, Wyndham has managed the Biloxi Bacon Brigade and all the marine activities that he has led, the Biloxi Search and Rescue and Dive Team. During his tenure, Wyndham earned the Distinguished Service Medal in 2019, received numerous commendations for going above and beyond the call of duty, and was recognized by various local organizations, including the Special Olympics Mississippi, Keesler Air Force Base, and Habitat for Humanity for his tireless volunteer work and commitment to community. Therefore, the city of Biloxi extends its deepest gratitude to Major Harold Butch Wyndham for his service, leadership, dedication to the citizens of Biloxi, and to the Gulf Coast. His contributions have made a lasting impact on the department and the community, and his legacy of service will continue to inspire future generations of law enforcement officers. Congratulations, Butch, we love you.
Thank you, sir.
If not, we're proud of you, and all the best for you and your family. Love all of y'all.
I appreciate y'all coming, and I'll be back in April.
All right. A couple of few things I want to add before we get to the audit. This week, on the 11th, I think, activities for Martin Luther King Celebration begins officially. I think we have a couple of events on the 11th at the Civic Center, on the 12th also at the Civic Center, and at the Oral Keef Art and Culture, Oral Keef Museum on the 16th, and a number of things happening throughout the week, and then culminating on the 20th with the MLK Parade and Battle of the Bands. So we look for an exciting week, and I think we've got a couple of commitments for, I think, nine high school bands, as well as Jackson State University, and also Alcorn, with a reception following the parade, so people can meet the university bands that will be the big attraction. We've got a lot of community support and donations to go along with, you know, to make this event successful. So we're appreciative of everybody who's contributed, and we'll look forward to this week of celebration. And councilman, you can add anything if I've forgotten it.
My niece is in the band for Alcorn State University, and of course, I started my college career at Jackson State. So that's awesome.
Well, we look forward to a great week. At this point, Kim, I would ask you to give us a briefing on the audit. Thank you so much.
So with me today is Maria Saylor. She's my audit manager. She's the one that ran your audit team, and she's going to drive the PowerPoint up on the screen. Because of its placement, I think it'll be easier if we just walk through your paper copy in front of you. So let's just walk through, and I'll mention the highlights of your audit, and answer any questions that you have. Turn to page three. You have three deliverables from me in addition to the PowerPoint. You have your bound audit report, you have a governance letter, and you have a management letter. Those are your three deliverables. Governance letter is a standard letter that we have to give those in charge of governance. It outlines your responsibility as an audity, our responsibility as auditor, all the adjustments that were proposed are in there, estimates, and any other items that we bring to your attention. That's something that you could just read on your own, it just requires communication. On page four of the PowerPoint, we're looking at your audit as of 9:30:23. You have received an unmodified opinion. The audit reports on pages two and four of the bound green report, the highest level of assurance that we can give. And you also have a report on compliance within here on pages 78 and 79. It's your compliance with laws and regulations. Page five of the PowerPoint points out that you have pages five through 16, and this bound audit report was prepared by your management. It's management's discussion and analysis, and it's a summarized version of everything that's in this audit report that we're going through. So if you want to read that, that's your snapshot of 2023. On page six, the reason why your audit report's so thick is because you get two full sets of financial statements within these bound audit reports. One set's a government-wide financial statements, they're full accrual, and they're very similar to private sector business. Then you get a fund-level set of financial statements, which starts on page 19 through 26, and that's on a economic resources model. It's more of a spendable presentation that is what you use to manage the city on an ongoing basis. So you have two sets of financial statements. I am going to talk a little bit about the government-wide, but we'll spend most of our time on the fund level, since that's what you use to manage. On page eight of the PowerPoint, this is the statement of net position at the government-wide full accrual level. You have governmental activities in one column, and you have business activities in the other. The biggest difference in this report and the fund-level report is the fixed assets are recorded, capital, all your capital assets and infrastructure on here. Any debt is recorded, and in that debt includes the unfunded pension liability, as well as a new liability for subscription, which was related to the implementation of Gatsby 96 this year. So you have a lot of liabilities in this presentation that you do not have at the fund On the business activities, this is the same, and both the government-wide and the fund activity, because your water and sewer important harbor funds are reported like a business. So there is really no difference between those two, like there is with the governmental If you turn to page 10, still full accrual on this, government-wide, this shows all of the expenses by department. It shows the program revenues, which are made up of grants and charges for services, and then the net. That's what you see at the top of the page. At the bottom of the page, you see the general revenues for governmental that aren't specific to a department. And I do want to mention on the one item here that there's a category called miscellaneous, and that's got a pretty large amount in it at the governmental activities. And what that's made up of is your water and sewer admin fees, recoveries and settlements, cemetery lots, and other miscellaneous collections. So that's what's making up that miscellaneous number. It's not a specific tax related to the government. That's all I'm going to talk about on the government-wide financial statements. So now we're going to move on to the governmental fund presentation. If you move to page 12, what you're going to see here is you have three major funds, the general fund, the general capital projects fund, and the debt service fund. And then you have another column for other non-governmental funds, which is made up of 11 funds, six special revenue, and five capital projects. They're all combined in this one column. You can see, if you look at the bottom of page 12, you'll see the total assets in each of these funds and the combined funds. And then if you turn to page 13, you'll see the total liabilities by fund. And then at the bottom of the page are your fund balances. And I'm going to take a minute to explain what these categories mean. You have non-spendable. That means it's an asset that's not cash. You've already paid for something that's sitting in the balance sheet like prepaid insurance. You can't spend it again, so it's a non-spendable resource. Then the restricted category means that it's restricted from an outside source, by legislation or another outside source that was requiring the restriction. And then we come down to committed, and that's where the board commits certain funds for certain items, which is debt service and other commitments, which are more fully discussed in the notes to these financial statements. And then the last category is unassigned, which is what's left to spend on city operations in addition to what we've discussed as being restricted and committed. If you go to page 14, I'm going to look a little harder at the general fund, because that's the city's main fund with the most governmental activity in it. You'll see, we're comparing this to 23 to 22, looking back historically, and cash decreased 1.9 million. Your receivables decreased in that receivable balance, or your taxes receivable and your leases receivable, and the decrease is collection of those lease receivables. So that's what's making up that $1.4 million decrease. And then you'll see further down, due from city funds went up 2.1 million. That's where the other funds that we just talked about, when we went through all the funds, owe the general fund more than they did in prior year. In the liability section, you'll see the unearned revenue. This is related to ARPA. This is your ARPA funds that you received, and they've all been committed as of December 31, 2024. So this count should start going down as those funds are used. And then here we see again the non-spendable amounts, the committed amounts, and the unassigned. No restricted money in the general fund, just the board committed amount of 1.4 million. If we move to page 16, this is all of the funds again, the three major and the 11 non-major. And now we're looking at the revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. You'll see the total revenues for each one of those funds on page 16. Turn to page 17, you'll see the expenditures for each of those funds. And then on page 18 is your other financing sources and uses. So this is giving you a detail by fund. We're going to look at page 19, which is your general fund, compared to 2022. Revenues were up 3.4 million compared to 2022, and that's mainly related to grant revenue. Your taxes and your other charges for services and other revenues approximated 2022. In the expenditure section, the general government, public safety, and parks and recreation department saw the biggest increase over 2022. In the general government, you purchased new servers, computers, other equipment, and there was some increase in personnel cost. In public safety, you had three fire trucks and some increase in personnel cost. And in parks and recreation was also related to some personnel cost. In the non-departmental category, that's not specific to a department, that increase is related to insurance and premium expenses. You'll see on other financing sources, you'll see the 1.7 million in capital leases related to those fire truck leases that you entered into in 2023. Now we're going to move to page 21. We're looking at the proprietary fund, water and sewer, port and harbor. Not a lot of change in the statement of net position. You did see an increase in your due from other governments, a 3.8 million, which is related to grant revenue not received at year end. If you look down at your capital asset section, you completed 167 million in capital projects, so it comes out of construction in progress, and it goes into depreciable assets. So those two changes are related to completion of projects.
Kim, excuse me for interrupting. You had mentioned on page 21, due from other governments, and I didn't hear what that...
Grant revenue. Grant, grant revenue.
Grant revenue. Okay.
That you haven't received at the end of the year. And there's just more outstanding at the end of 2023 than there was in 22. We'll come page 22. Very little change in the liabilities. Most of it's accounts payable, which is timing of when bills come in and when they get paid. And the increase in the non-current liabilities is related to that you're recording the net pension liability, which is an actuarially determined amount that gets recorded at both the government-wide and the proprietary fund funds. Return to page 24. You'll see your charges for services were approximate 2022, very little increase there. In the prior year, you did have miscellaneous revenue of 536,000 related to your overbilling refund from Harrison County Utility Authority. You didn't have that in 23. And then at the bottom of the page, the capital contributions are related to assets that were moved over, that really were related to water and sewer that were moved over from the general fund. So that's where you see those capital contributions coming from the general fund. One more statement to talk about. The statement of cash flows is presented for your proprietary fund. You used 3 million in operating activities, and you received 2.3 from non-capital. You received 809 from capital and 1,000 from capital and finance activities, and you also received 267,000 from investing activities. So overall, decreasing cash of 15,866. Before I go any further, any questions on those statements? We only have a few more slides left. Won't take me too much longer. On page 27 of the PowerPoint, these are very detailed note disclosures in this bound report that you can look at for more detail on all of the things that we just discussed. On page 28 of the PowerPoint, the city is subject to single audit. You spent 28.7 million in federal expenditures. That single audit, or federal expenditures, is on page 83. Most of your federal expenditures comes from disaster assistance. And if you look at page 85, we didn't find any issues with compliance, other than your single audit was late, so we point that out. But I also want to pause here and say that you're now current on your single audit. Your next due date of your single audit is June 30, 2025. And so if we have all of the information to start the audit by March 1, you can easily meet your June 30 deadline, and you're right back on track, being in compliance with the single audit deadline. You had four major programs this year. That's something that you don't see every year, and I want to explain why that happened. And one reason is ARPA funds automatically have to be audited, just because the federal government says so. Then we have to follow other O and B requirements when we go through to select which programs we have to audit. The next thing we have to do is see if you have any programs that have to be audited that were not audited in the last two years, so in the third year. So you had two programs that fell in that category. When we add all those programs up, we have to have 50% coverage. Those three programs did not give us 50% coverage, so we had to select a fourth program to get that coverage. I don't expect that to happen again. For sure, next year, I think you'll have two programs, two major programs, one being ARPA, and then one being enough, another, the program to get you to the coverage that's required. And then I can't really speak for the year after that, but that's why you have four major programs this year, is because you have some grants programs that had not been audited in several years that had to be audited. This is not a judgment that your auditor makes. It is a checklist, step-by-step checklist that we follow from O and B that tells us what we have to audit. So that's why you have four major programs. You have two more report, or one more report in the bound report, and that's your report on compliance with state laws and regulations, and there were no non-compliance identified in that report. And then the last thing I'm going to mention is we do give a management letter comment, management letter to you. These are items that we identify where you can strengthen accounting processes and procedures. We also point out any new pronouncements that are coming down the pipeline. We give this to your management, they go through it, and we've already discussed all those comments with them. They're not considered material or significant, or they would have been reported in the bound audit report. So I don't go through all those, but you can go through them. If, I've just presented a lot of information to you. If you have any questions about anything we talked about, feel free to contact me or Maria, and we'll get anything answered that we didn't answer today in the presentation. And that's all I'm going to go through, unless you have more questions.
One, another question. So under the last item you mentioned, comments and recommendations, we have significant deficiencies or material weaknesses.
Do not.
Right. But I mean, the terms are relative, correct? I mean, there, some should, should we have any significant deficiencies, if we ever had any, because we've had some, I think, in past reports?
That's, we call the single audit deadline, we have to report that as a significant deficiency. I believe that's, that's the only significant. Have they had other significant deficiencies?
Right. But what I'm getting at is a material weakness, I'm thinking, would concern me more, say, as a councilman, than would a significant deficiency.
Yes, but you don't have either of those.
That's correct. Are there any other descriptions besides material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, or are they the only two that are generally used, if applicable?
That's what we use, yeah, as auditor. We don't have another term. And auditing standards kind of guide us to those terms and tell us what constitutes a material weakness and what constitutes a significant deficiency. But like I said, you don't have any.
Okay.
So Kim, let me jump in and just ask your opinion, you know, from a management standpoint, just, you know, there's nothing to worry about with regard to the way we've done some things as far as operations over the last several years, I think. And I think the amount of Gatsby curves that are thrown to you indicates, you know, how long things take, as well as the six programs that popped up in this process. So we're appreciative of everything, you know, this unconditional kind of opinion of this, we're appreciative of that, and I would offer to the council, and I'm sure you would, they're very specific, you would come back and, you know, explain anything that they would have questions on.
Questions that we have.
Right.
And we're ready to help you meet your 630 deadline and have you right on what we're right current.
Right. Well, I'm appreciative of everything that, you know, you work with us and our staff, and, you know, being responsive to whatever questions would pop up. We do appreciate that. Thanks, Kim, I appreciate it.
I think Mr. Glavine has a question.
Yeah, kind of a clarification. So why did it take, why did it take so long to kind of complete this audit process?
So originally, in our original proposal, in order to meet your desired March deadline, we had to have the trial balance by January. We got the trial balance in June, and that was your deadline month.
Okay.
Then when we missed that first, we have to start working in and around other jobs that we have, that's on our end. Secondly, an audit, your audit is big, is time-consuming, it's many, many hours of work. When we get to a point where we have questions, and we ask if sometimes accounting is relying on other staff members to provide that information, and it just takes a long time to gather all that. I don't see any issues with that, other than it's just very involved.
All right. Well, that answers the timeliness, and I appreciate you answering that honestly like that. So again, what I'm reading and hearing from you, y'all have completed this process to date, and there is no glaring red flags that are sticking out in this audit.
We would have reported them to you in this presentation or in this bound audit report.
Okay.
Unified opinion, highest level of assurance that you can get from us.
And I'll just make this comment, and this is a general comment as we are having this topic. And I welcome the scrutiny of the public. Certainly, we're open to the scrutiny when the timeliness issue comes up, and then people start speculating and spinning or jumping to certain conclusions. And I can appreciate that to a point. However, there are some in the social media and those spin rooms that jump to certain conclusions, that there's something being done or hidden, or something to that effect. I didn't, I don't see that, or I'd be the first one to question it in this, in these meetings. So look forward to working through this, a very lengthy document. Thank you for providing it. We've been patient up here, and appreciate your professional care. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Marbleitch. And who was your trustee assistant?
Maria Saylor.
All right, Maria, thank you. And also, I'd just like to thank our controller, Diana, for her hard work in pushing forward, just a lot, lot of things to, from previous years, that she worked through and everything, and hustled, and like to just thank her and her staff for their hard work and their efforts. Thank you. All right, Mayor, anything else on your report?
I would ask the council to spread the expenses of the Biloxi travel expense card through the minutes. through the minutes. And that concludes my report.
That will be done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we come to council reports. We'll start with Mr. Guines in Ward Two.
Okay, first of all, Happy New Year to everyone. I just have something real quick and short. I know that we're, we're, we're slowly going with this infrastructure, and we're just about tweaking it and wrapping it up, but I know that there are some things that that's going to take time. I have a street called Cop Street, and one of the residents asked, could we do a little quick shave and pave? That's Cop Street between Lee Street and Keller Street. Just a little light shave and pave there. And I walked most of them just to try to see how they were, and that's about the only one. And that could tie us up until we get through the process of finishing up the infrastructure. So I just ask that the engineers kind of look at that for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Councilwoman Newman.
Jerry, do we have any update on the methadone clinic?
I have someone going by there twice a week. So far, they've kept it clean. I think I reported last time that they had cleaned the property, the wooded area behind there. All of that trash is gone, and they're keeping the dumpster area clean. And we haven't had any more reports, so we'll continue to monitor at least twice a week.
Very good, thank you. Do we have any update on the Broadwater property? How's it going?
They've moved, some moving equipment out, out to the, the part of the property that wasn't cleaned. There's some equipment out there now, and they've just, they said they're gonna, they're gonna completely clean that property up.
Perfect.
So then, as far as I know, they actually started. They got the equipment out there, and they have even moved a little bit already.
Happy New Year, huh? Thank you, thank you. All right, that's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That brings us to Council Four, excuse me, Ward Four, Mr. McGilvery.
One thing, Mayor, is there any, any update on the soccer field lighting that we've talked about?
No update. We're just trying to get some estimates on what it's gonna, what it's gonna do, what we, what it's gonna take. I think Sherri's.
We're working on that now?
We are.
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Ward Six, Mr. Glavine.
Just a couple of comments. So I had some business to do on Keesler Air Force Base today, and it looks like their security is, went up another level or two. That's about the longest I've, I've had to get a temporary pass to get on base. And my, my comments are based on, we, we got certain events coming up. Chief, are we, are we looking? Or, we got certain events coming up, and with the recent incidents near nearby cities, are we looking at, you know, additional steps to heighten our security or awareness?
We have, we have a meeting next week with all coast, well, all Harrison County law enforcement to discuss some, some issues that we'd like to take a look at. And we made a call today to a company, a barrier company that we had looked at doing business with about a year ago. We called them today to see if we, if we did order some, some new barriers that would help us close off streets a little better, if they could get those to us in time. And they're putting together a rent program for us, just so we can take a look. Not saying we're doing that, but we just wanted to take a look and, and, and see what it would actually cost us if we were able to put something, when we close off a street, if we're able to put something there, other than a police car or policeman, something that could not be driven through. So we are taking some steps like that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Chief. 12th Night kicked off. I know the mayor participated heavily in some of the council members, and we're kicking off Mardi Gras, so everybody get ready. I think it'll be a great year this year. I really don't have anything to add today.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. And Ward Seven, Mr. Shoemaker.
Just a few things. The roundabout, I think finally they're, they're getting close, hopefully. They're working again. They were off just a couple of weeks, I think, for the holidays, but they're back working now. So hopefully that'll get wrapped up pretty clo, pretty soon. And I think, I think paving is, is the big thing, so hopefully that's coming in the next couple of weeks anyway. Glad to hear about Broadwater, and hopefully they're getting that cleaned up. For some reason, the last two weeks, I've gotten multiple complaints. I have, anyway, but multiple complaints lately on the, the walkway across Highway 90 by Small Craft Harbor with homeless. And I don't know, and I know we've talked about it recently, but the security for that, does the Port Commission provide the security and the, they're cleaning that up in the mornings or every couple of days or?
Let me, if I can respond, yeah, maintenance has some, every morning and do some things as far as closing at, at eight o'clock, I think. And we've discussed adding an additional task to the harbor master as far as from, for at least every hour to make a move on all of this. And it, we did visit and saw that specifically, you know, by the monument and towards the overpass. But we're going to make some additional task for the harbor master to attend to, to make sure we don't let anything go, drop through this, the tracks, the hole, I guess, what I'm trying to say.
So basically, they'll, during their, they'll patrol it every hour or so. But now, for, you said, you mentioned it's closed at eight, so when it's closed at eight, nobody, it's closed. Nobody can go up, down, across, or anything. Okay, okay. Um, okay.
They've been, they've been closing the elevator, the doors are closing, yeah.
Okay. And cleaning.
Actually, yeah, well, maintenance has been trying to do it, and there's been a little bit of damage on it. But yeah, no, it's, it's not, not cool at this point in time, because of, you know, the activity around there.
But it is something we've been working on, it sounds like. Thank you, Mayor. And lastly, I just bring up, kind of expand on what I was saying, homeless. I got off the, on Division Street exit yesterday, maybe Sunday or Monday, and right there under the bridge, there was five homeless people, and I think three on the other side. I know it's a huge issue. I don't know the answer, but hopefully we're going to continue to work on that. I know as a city and as a, as a community and as a Gulf Coast, we've got to do something. It just seems to be getting way worse and, and really no better. But again, I think that's something we're working on.
On the radar, yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Really, two things. Early in the budgeting process, a pay raise for directors was mentioned, I think it was 3%. Are there any plans to bring that forward?
We're studying that. We'll, we'll do that probably on a second meeting. We'll kind of get our proposals.
Second meeting of this month?
Month, yeah.
Oh, right around the corner. Okay, thank you, Mayor. The other thing is, and I'd touch base with, with you and the attorney on the SecureX contract that we have, which deals with license plate reading for insurance purposes of your vehicle's insurance. There seems to be some confusion out there in the general public that this has been discontinued or it's paused, could?
Want to come up to, there's a couple of little twists and turns on the situation as far as the data being released from pub, from the Department of Public Safety, as well as some insurance things.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
Well, the contract, the contract remains in effect based on what they send us. That's how we process. I think somebody reported, I don't know if they had any sources, or they never did a public record request. There was some social media sort of animation that, that we've canceled it, or it's over, and it's not over. It's ongoing, as far as I know, but Chief can speak to that.
It, it's ongoing, and it's, if there's any, I guess you could refer to it as a, as a suspension, but that's from the company, not from the city. The company has, has halted what they're doing, and I think it probably has something to do with some, some legal things that they're working out. And they, they've assured us that we'll have an answer from them about what's going on in the near future.
So it'd be accurate to say that the contractor, if you will, is looking at some things and pausing it, if that's the correct word, but there's nothing on our end?
There's nothing on our end. If there's issues on their end, you know, we hope that they get those worked out. Certainly, we, you know, we want everything.
And Chief, Department of Public Safety, there's no, no, no issues there. As far as releasing data, I think there was some, some mention a while back, but we're good.
Far as, everything there is legal.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you clearing that up. There's some question about that. And I heard Mr. Glavine say social media, and social media's popping up. So getting accurate information out to the public, if, if, if it's not accurate, or it's not timely, or whatever, then generally there are conspiracy theories abound, so.
Bottom line is, pay your insurance.
Well, yeah.
That's right.
Keep your vehicles covered and insured, and you don't have to worry about this issue, which is, in fact, the law. Thank you, Chief. That concludes my comments and questions. That brings us now to the public agenda. If anyone, we'll set aside up to 45 minutes of this council meeting to listen to individuals who wish to address the council. Every individual who wishes to address the council will have up to three minutes to do so. There's a digital timer there on your left, and if you exceed the three minutes, or when your three minutes are up, you'll hear this sound. There you go. With that having been said, when you're recognized, please come up, have a seat. You'll need to pull the microphone close, so your voice is picked up. And if you've not already signed the sign and sheet on the table, please do that. Then state your name clearly for the council clerk, so that she can get it into the record. With that being said, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council?
Hello. Good evening, members of the City Council, and Happy New Year. I'm Chris Hoa. I am here on behalf of me and my mother, Helen Hoa, for the, requesting conditional use for our property on Porter Avenue. We are on the policy agenda, Resolution A. We are requesting this to provide more accessible lodging to travelers coming to our city of Biloxi, as well as mainly focusing on helping the service members of the Keesler Air Force Base, the trainees, workers, and visitors who are, where the entrance of Keesler Air Force Base is rather close to the property on Porter Avenue. We know that the Keesler Air Force Base is a key institution to our local economy, and that we want to be able to provide the accessibility, comfort, that they can just stay close by and be able to be productive at their time on the Keesler Air Force Base. We're requesting this, this conditional use mainly because we've had requests, a lot of requests we were able to fill, but there are many requests we cannot fill, because we do not have the, for, for guests who want to stay less than the one-month term, which would fall under short-term rental, under the conditional use, which we are requesting for, so we can help all of the guests that are requesting stay with our property. In reference to the property itself, we don't think, a concern would be that our property may not fall into the identity of the Porter Avenue neighborhood, but from what we understand that the neighborhood itself has become more mixed of, instead of a pure residential neighborhood, there are on Porter Avenue, the road itself, restaurants, the supermarket, even a government building right on that road itself, and a restaurant right at the end where our property is located. So we don't find that if we get the short-term conditional use approval, that it would harm the identity of the neighborhood. We also kind of check in with the non-conditional use statements to qualify for the conditional use by the city. We find that we satisfy all the non-conditional uses themselves, including how protecting, the, sorry, the zoning requirements. Ours is already zone RM30, which is, which is the requirement of the conditional use. We are helping the tra, we have no issues with the traffic flow. Our property itself is secluded, we are fenced. We don't see any issues with distractions, distractions or noise. And I don't believe that us having conditional use will harm the property values of our neighbors. We are a, from the Mississippi area, we do want to follow any regulations and pay any taxes we need to, to satisfy the short-term conditional use requirement by the city. Our neighbor right next door to our property on Porter Avenue already has the short-term conditional use approval, so we don't find any reason why we shouldn't have it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hoa. So anybody else on my left, your right, that wishes to address the council? Anybody else on my left? Okay, anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council?
I'll start with saying the same thing to you for seeing us this evening, City Council. My, my name is Brian Ostavitz. My problem, subject is, I have a partial ID number 10070-01-045.003. This is Woolmarket Lake Road. We have somebody living in their vehicles off the side of the road. There's been numerous amounts of complaints from the neighbors. We've called in several times to see what's going on. There's mounds and mounds of trash in this, on this piece of property. We are just north, I have a map here, you guys look at, we're just north of the Biloxi River. My property is on the Biloxi River. When it floods down there in Woolmarket, everything from them woods flows into the Biloxi River. The person has no running water, no sewage, no trash pickup, they're just living in their cars. When they got called on, they said if we can't see it, we can't go. Code enforcement went down there, but then they put a bunch of tarps up, maybe 20 tarps on the side of the woods, so you couldn't see the garbage. And they have a problem saying they can't go on the property to identify the fact there is garbage there. But I know the garbage is there, I can have pictures of them. My concern is, what's going on with the waste? What's the garbage happening with? Where's her, you know, her septic, or her fees? What's going on? Where's all this going to go? Because it's going to come right into my yard, into the Biloxi River, as soon as it floods. And as we know, it floods a lot down there. So I'd like to ask if we can get that situation investigated more. They say they have an ID on her, but the vehicles are there, all have pieces of wood over the license plates. Everything's very concealed. See all kinds of signs out there, quit looking, don't do this, and it's just, it looks bad on the neighborhood, looks bad on the community down there, we're a small community, and some of the people don't even let their kids ride the bikes down there because of the situation's right there in front of us. So if we can, maybe for, especially cleanliness, that garbage going into the Biloxi River has to be terrible, and there's a lot of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ostavitz. Is there anybody else on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Yes, sir? Mr. Gray?
Happy New Year, Council. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name's Wayne Gray. I'm here today to ask the mayor and the city council to set aside three parcels of property to create a community vegetable garden. Everyone knows the high prices of vegetables these days. I'm not asking the city to build the garden, but to designate the land for them. I will help start the project and get the volunteers to take it over, because I am not a gardener, and I would like to see more of these throughout the city. The next thing I would like to talk about is the homeless. No one wants to see someone homeless, and there's no way to stop it altogether. But if Biloxi, DeArville, Gulfport, and Harrison County comes together and adopts a rough sleeping ordinance, and find a place where all four communities can come together and start a facility for them to start over in life with counselors and a working program. It is start in the right direction. Small housing can also be an option, and some just don't want help. Being tough on them may make them enter the program or relocate. As the next Ward One City Councilman, I will work with the city council to help adopt these ordinances. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to address the council? No, this is, this, you, you can comment on the topic of your choice for three minutes. If you wish to speak to those items, you could do that right now. Mr. Ostavitz, could you spell your name for the clerk? Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Tricia Hatton. I live at 1773 Ridgeway Drive in suburban Acres. I'm questioning a property at 1768 Ridgeway Drive. On September 12th, we had a storm, a small storm come through. A tree fell on the carport and the house. I, that day, I called code enforcement, but let them know because there was a mother and two children living in that house and it was a danger. No one showed up. Then the sat, they finally moved the lady out of the house after a couple weeks. She finally was refusing to move. She finally left. The house sat with no repair. I contacted code again on 1017 and talked with Ms. Bucy. And a couple hours later, I was sent a text screen from Karen at Swetman's. Wendy Swetman owns this property. And it showed that he was having, they were going, trying to get a contractor. On 1025, I checked back in again and she said, we have to give them time. Not only I, but three other neighbors called code enforcement and they were all told that no violations have ever been sent to Swetman in regards to this property in five years. Why was a violation not sent? If it would have been my property or my other neighbor's property, a violation would have been sent immediately. My other neighbors were also told that somebody was going to come out to look at this property. Nobody ever showed up. The, on 1122, a dumpster finally showed up. This is from September 12th. This carport sat crushed and with just a tarp over it. And I was also told by code that we didn't have a code enforcement officer in our neighborhood. We have other multiple houses in our neighborhood that have either heavy debris from just construction or houses that are falling apart. I did notice today that finally there is a sign in front of one of them that has had cracked and broken windows for many months, that there's finally going to be a council meeting on it. I don't understand why there was no, do I have to be, you know, do I have to be Wendy Swetman to get away with not having a violation sent? This is unacceptable for my neighborhood. And also, one other thing, on, my one neighbor did call Public Works in the beginning of November regarding the curbs and she was told that it was pub, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hatton. Anybody else on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie. I'm with Star C LLC.
Julie, what is your last name, please?
Tang, T-A-N-G.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm actually on behalf of the LLC, Star C LLC, that Brian earlier complained about. He and his wife are constantly harassing me and they, they would scream into my yard at 9:00 PM and they said a lot of inappropriate things. I think it's like racial hate related. They just wouldn't leave me alone. And I called the police. The police wouldn't do much about it, but I really hope the city can address it. And in regards to his complaint about trash, that's 100% made up. I do not have any trash. And I, all the trash bags are taken out. I live in Gulfport and I have, all my trash are taken out to Gulfport. And I honestly don't generate a lot of trash either ways. And it's kind of outrageous for someone to say that they care about my property and, and the well-being of my property more than me as a property owner. I think that's pretty outrageous. But I just want everybody to know that they, not just them, but also other neighbors in the neighborhood are spreading rumors about me and my property. Some of them saying I throw parties and some of them say, say I'm an illegal immigrant, but a lot of lies and rumors and, and I think it's very extremely unfair and I really, I really hope this to be stopped, stopped. I hope the city can do something about it because it's, it's, it's been going on for months and months and they just, they're only getting worse. I don't know, I don't know what else to do. Like I'm a property owner, having the right to be on the property, that's like, they're trying to literally kick me out and they, one day at 9:30 PM, they are, they literally drove a golf cart and, and talked to me and said, my, my fucking ass is gone in 30 days. That's, that's the type of people they are.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. Any other comments? You have a few seconds left.
Yes, I, I just hope like the, either code enforcement or will not issue violations based on lies because it happened before, but it got addressed properly. But I just don't, I just don't wish to be disturbed because people lie about me and my property. I think as a property owner, I have the right to peacefully enjoy the property as a property owner and also the right to privacy.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tang, for your comments. Anybody else on my right, your left, wish to address the council? Anybody in the back? Did we miss anybody? Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council? There being no one, citizens' comments are closed and we'll move to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read Resolution A, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a short-term rental located at 281 A and B Porter Avenue.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion by Ms. Newman. And a second by Mr. Guines. Okay, Ms. Newman?
We've talked about this property before, but from what I take it, they're already letting people come and stay from the Air Force Base for 30 days or, 30 days or more. So I don't see what the bigger issue would be to let them stay for shorter term. Short-term rentals, as we've discussed before, people take care of the property, which I assume they're doing a good job of and that's how they're getting these customers. So do you have any more to say, Jerry, about this property? I know it's a duplex on Porter Avenue.
Do you have the, Carrie?
They redid it as well, right?
The property we're talking about is the one that's outlined in green there. The property immediately to the north of that is already a short-term rental. Those two properties are the only two properties on the block that are zoned RM30. Everything else on the block is zoned single-family residential. So if anybody else came in and tried to do a short-term rental, they would have to ask for a zoning change first and then come back and get conditional use. So if, if you put up the zoning, you have that one? This shows you that the, the two properties there next to the drainage ditch, both are zoned RM30. Again, the one next to the ditch already has short-term rental. This one does not and all the rest of the properties around there, the yellow, are all zoned, uh, single-family residential, so.
The, the large lot right just south of it is a large vacant lot. It's probably 150 by 150. There are not any houses on it, so it, they have plenty of parking for what they're asking for and the planning commission voted 12 to 0 to approve it.
Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Guines, anything?
Yeah, that was going to be my next question. What did the planning commission, so that's 12, 0. And I think you said that the property has just been remodeled? You just remodeled everything and everything is in good working order? Okay, I don't see any reason why not if the property right next to it is, is set to.
Any other comments from the council? I have a couple of observations. Mr. Creel, how many short-term rentals do we have permitted in the city?
We have 389. So they're almost that sheet. There are 389 that have been approved. There are 369 that have their actual permits that came in and act, so there are 20 that have not come and gotten their permits yet. 351 actually have business licenses. As far as the 75 that the council voted to allow in RM20 and RM30 as conditional use, there are 60 that are in there, so we have room for 15. If these are approved, that would take up two more of those spaces, so that will only leave 13 more after these two, if this gets approved.
Okay, and of course, many of these, I mean, short-term rentals became a hot topic a number of years ago.
Yes, sir.
And previous to short-term rentals, they were long-term rentals.
Yes, sir.
And because of that, now you've got, and they can still be used as long-term rentals, even if you have a short-term rental permit, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
All right. So I don't feel that there's a compelling, personally, I don't feel there's a compelling need for additional short-term rentals, particularly in that area. The, I would also say that it's not compatible with the neighborhood. North of, north of Division, I don't think there are any short-term rentals on Porter. I don't think so.
Both of Division, no.
And then when you get up to the railroad tracks, things become a little more commercial. But at, at that end of that section of Porter, there, just south of that, the two green areas on the map, but just my position is, has been, because I voted against the unit or, or the parcel, or the conditional use that came up earlier, in the parcel next to it. This, this matter was heard before the council and was not approved before the council, what, about 15 or 16 months ago?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And the property owners, because if you want to come before the, the council and take another bite at the apple, so to speak, you have to wait until at least a year passes.
Yes, sir.
And, and a year has passed. As, to my knowledge, nothing has changed since the last vote, that I'm aware of. You may be privy to information.
Nothing that I can point to, no, sir.
Said all that to say this and that is I can't support this request for a conditional use. I just wanted to make my position clear on that. Were there any other comments?
I do.
Mr. Glavin.
So I recall too, this a little over a year ago, and I think it failed 2 to 5, if I recall the vote. And do you remember what was the reason we denied it? The actual reason? Because you have to have a reason to deny. You can't just say, I don't want it. All of us up here can't say we don't want it.
I, I just remember that Mr. Lawrence had made some statements about the fact that there was a lot of single-family zoning in that neighborhood and there was a concern that if this one went through, that there would be other requests.
So there's not really an error in the existing zoning. There are RM30, they can put long-term rentals tomorrow. They, they can rent it for long-term rentals if they wanted to, correct?
That's correct, but with, with a conditional use, you don't have to show error in the zoning or anything like that. It's just, you, you just have to determine, you know, do you feel like it meets the nine criteria or not?
Okay, and with the limited licenses that we have left on the table, you know, it may not be as compatible to this area as probably, there may be a bigger need like Councilman Tisdale alluded to than, than a significant need in this area. So I, I don't have any reason to change my vote either, but I do respect all, all the votes on this council. Thank you.
Yeah, let me, let me comment a little bit. I, you know, I know you're saying, you know, we want to save them to the end, but of course, you have to look at first come, first served. And sometimes, you know, you, you gotta take care of the, the hand that's hot. Looking at Keesler Air Force Base, right there, and having those places right outside the gate, I wouldn't want to see those airmen go way out to the hotel when you got a spot right there and it's available and we got an opportunity to pass it. And you have a house right next to it. So, you know, I think last time we might have, it might have been the upgrade issue, I think it was, but they've remodeled the place, they've done all the, everything that we, the city, have asked them to do. Remodel it, upgrade it. Property is clean and it's in a perfect location right on side of another one. So what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So if you got one right on side of it, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't because it shows that we're showing favoritism to one and not the other. So I think we need to look at it more in that light and for that, I think I'll be supporting
Any other comments? One other question, Mr. Creel. Has, has the owner had any notices of violations related to short-term rentals in past years?
Not on this property, but in, in 2014, they came for a zoning change on a property on Dimming Place in West Biloxi to do short-term rentals. That was denied by the planning commission, denied by the city council. We did, in 2020, they were operating a short-term rental without a license in that same Dimming Place location and we wrote them a ticket and they stopped. We haven't had any more complaints about that.
Thank you, Mr. Creel. Any final comments? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of approving a conditional use for 281 A and B Porter Avenue? All in opposition? All right, it, it fails on a 2-4 vote. Do you need those in opposition? Carrie? Okay, you got it. All right, thank you. All right, the clerk would read the next item, please.
Resolution granting conditional use approval to authorize a personnel services establishment for a nail salon at 2462 Pass Road.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second by Mr. Glavin. My comment is this, the, the current site is vacant, it has no structure. It is in a limited business and I believe requires a conditional use for this type of business. Is it a personal service business? Is that how it's termed?
Yes, sir. That's the way it's classified.
Okay. And so I'm in favor of that. I'll leave it, leave it at that. I may have a comment later if there's any further discussion. That having been said, Mr. Glavin.
Well, you know, I know they're trying to develop this property. Do you know who the, who the architect or engineering firm is? Is it a reputable company that's assisting with this?
It was, and when they submit their, their architectural plans, they have to be stamped by a registered professional on any commercial structure.
All right, that's important. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, concerns from the council? Okay, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the conditional use at 2462 Pass Road? All opposed? All right, it's approved on a 6-0 vote. Thank you. The clerk would read item C, please.
Resolution granting vacation of a portion of an unimproved public right-of-way on Crusus Street.
Go move.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines. Is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Glavin. Mr. Guines?
Yeah, this is just, we've been cleaning up a lot of areas there. This is, this goes right alongside of our Mother Sorrow, all the way back to the railroad track where the, the old beer joint was at. And a lot of that has been taken up by a lot of the residents. And so the city, I believe, has cleaned a lot of that up. Mr. Creel, do you have anything else to add to that?
This is what we call a dedicated but unimproved right-of-way. It, it's like an alley that runs between Magnolia and the other street there. Murphy's Roofing had already asked that the southern part of this be vacated, so it's vacated up to a point. And what this would be is from Division Street on down would be vacated. So this entire stretch between those two would be vacated. Half the property would go to property owners on the east and half would go to the property owners on the right if this is approved.
And I think most of the residents already took their part.
Mr. Glavin, comment?
No comments.
Any other comments? Any other comments or concerns from the council? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor, the resolution is presented. It's approved on a six oh vote, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Guines, is there a second? By Mr. McGilvery. It's your lucky day, Mr. Guines, we're starting at your end. Any questions about items?
I don't see anything at all. I think I'm good.
All right, Ms. Newman, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. McGilvery, anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Glavin, anything?
I just have a comment about tally construction on the Sportsplex, change order number four. But my, my question is this, not necessarily specific to this change order, but once the work is complete, how long is the warranty on the work for?
Two years.
Two years? Two years, okay, thank you. I just wanted to get that in the record. No other comments.
All right, Mr. Shoemaker, anything? And I have nothing. We'll call for exceptions after the vote. All in favor, the consent agenda is presented. It's approved on a six oh vote. Any exceptions, Mr. Guines?
None.
Ms. Newman? Mr. McGilvery? Mr. Glavin?
I have none.
Mr. Shoemaker? And I have none. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creel?
Yes, sir. Item number A, Biloxi Investments LLC, three eighty-two Lee Street. This property's still in violation.
Is anyone here to speak on behalf of Biloxi Investments concerning this property at three eighty-two Lee Street? There being none, this hearing is closed. Item B, Mr. Creel?
Item B, Jelisa Pro by Dunpor, three ten Main Street. That case has been resolved. Item C, MJ Trust Two LLC, one three three oh one, Green Hill Circle. That case has been resolved. Item D, Ewan and Zan Nguyen, three eighty Lee Street. That case has been resolved. Item E, Jacob Stanslaw Pachalwiak et al., two seventy-four Bluer Drive. That case has been resolved. Item F, Hi Tha'Ntran, two eighty-nine Third Street. This property's still in violation.
Is Hi Tha'Ntran or anyone here speaking on his behalf concerning the property at two eight nine Third Street here to comment, or present to comment? All right, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the routine agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
By Mr. Guines, is there a second? By Ms. Newman? All right, did I see Walt Rhodey here earlier? Wake him up, Mr. Lawrence isn't here, but wake him up. Walt, you know the drill, just in twenty-five words or less. Thank you.
Good evening, council. So in the Mississippi PA website this morning, we have three hundred and eight point two thousand, that's currently in step three of five, that's waiting on the GARR approval, it's been there for one day. Currently, we have a very significant sixty-day balance in our city funds for pay for FEMA pay applications. And things appear to be going pretty well with our, working with our partners with MEMA and FEMA. So at this point, we're very positive on what it looks like to finish out the infrastructure program.
There you go, that was less than twenty-five words.
Well, you might want to talk about a little mobilization on St. Michael's?
No, they didn't ask, so no, sir.
I'm asking. I'll, I'll state, there's mobilization.
What's your name again, sir?
Mobilize, it was good mobilizing, mobilization is always good. Temperature is gonna kind of hold them back till it gets right, for asphalt.
Where is this?
St. Michael's one and two.
Paving on St. Michael's.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Warren pavings mobilized, you'll see their vehicles out in front, Oral Keef Museum along the Jason City Highway in that parking lot area. They're waiting for the temperature to get up so they can put down the final layers of asphalt in the St. Michael's project.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodey.
Thanks, Walt.
All right, we'll call for the question. All in favor, the routine agenda is presented. It's approved on a six oh vote. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. By Mr. McGilvery. And a second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor of adjourning? It's approved on a six oh vote, thank you. Ladies, excuse me, lady and gentlemen. Hope everybody has a great new year, we are adjourned.